Hey, we'll call the meeting to order. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda minutes?
There are no minutes, so, and no liquor license, so I just approve the agenda.
You have a motion to approve the agenda? I'll second that. Any discussion? Hearing none, all of them in favor?
Aye.
Anybody behind you doing?
No, no, uh, no. We got Tyler.
Hey, Larry.
Tyler's gone for.
Yep. Oh, Tyler's up?
Yeah, I'm cutting. I have to run up to, to handle magistrate court here in a, a couple of minutes, so. Uh, my first item is the demo contract. Uh, as I was saying, we've, uh, run this past. Everybody, I wrote the contract, sent it over to like for review. They've approved it. Um, I told them to wait to sign it until after you guys approved, just in case anybody had questions or anything. But since it's my work product, I would recommend signing it and then getting them started.
Okay.
Do you have a motion to approve the demolition contract?
I make a motion to approve the demolition contract.
I will second that. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all of them in favor?
Aye. You want me to sign that then, Tyler?
Unless, I don't, doesn't matter. Lonnie, do you want me to bring it to you to sign, or are you part of Carol's side?
I have some stuff I need to drop off, so maybe we can do a handoff outside.
Okay. Yeah, so I'll pick.
Okay.
An envelope.
Okay.
Either way, 'cause he's got it active that I can sign it this morning.
Uh, and then the second part is, uh, change order number one, just taking off the, um, taking off the, what, ten properties that we had opt out and then adding Christiansen's and, uh, Gutten Riders, I believe, onto their with.
These other ones that are opting out too, the last two?
No, this is just the first ones. We'll have to add, we'll have to add whichever ones we decide to pull off again, but. Uh, so that's removing certain properties and then, uh, I sent this over to Cory for them to add. Their project manager added their estimates for the two new properties on, onto this, which I don't have any issue with. Uh, 'cause both of them are pretty darn big. I mean, Christiansen's and Gutten Riders both have a bunch of sheds and all that stuff on the properties, so. I feel like their, their prices are right in with what would be reasonable, and so I would recommend approving that as well. And Cory's already signed that one.
Do you have a motion to approve the change orders?
So move.
I will second that. Any discussion? You say there's more that are opting out, Carol?
Yeah, we'll, we'll approve at least one today.
Yeah.
And then I think we've got maybe two more.
Because they're gonna sell their property, or they wanna build on that property?
They don't wanna sell their property.
Yeah, they're, I think they're staying.
They're staying.
It's been hard to see.
Yeah.
Uh, all of them in favor?
Aye.
Are you the abstract contract too, Tyler?
I am, yep. So, next up is amendment one to the abstract contract. Um, in our last conference call before we actually started closing, the state decided that we do need to do the Iowa title guarantee process for closings. So, uh, that changed things up a little bit and requires now a final abstract to be completed by Mills County Abstract, which is another three hundred dollars per property. That, which is fine, because, I mean, we'll have the money available, but it's just kind of frustrating, 'cause it's gonna be more work for them that they hadn't already contemplated.
Are we still at eleven houses that have asbestos?
Um, I think we might be more now, yeah. But, so that's what this little, little amendment is. I sent this over to Shannon, uh, the owner of Mills County Abstract, and I have not received any, any concerns back from her, so I'm recommending approval of the amendment. Basically, all it's doing is adding in the, uh, into the scope of work that they'll conduct, or complete the final abstracts for each of the properties, and then, uh, adds in the three hundred dollars onto what, what their contract price already was. So, that brings it up to, uh, fifty-seven thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars at, at a maximum.
Fifty-seven.
One fifty.
One fifty.
Do you have a motion to approve the amendment to the abstract contract?
So move.
I will second that. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all of them in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, next thing is approving the, I only have one opt-out certificate for you guys to approve right now. Uh, that is Kim and Kevin Barnes at two zero two four four Jenkins Ave. Um.
Two zero two.
I got that, I think, last week, and that's the, the.
I have pools too. I just forgot to bring it in.
Okay, and so she's got pools as well, so we've got two uncooled.
On Barnes, it's two oh two.
Two oh two four four Jenkins.
They were never planning on having a buyout.
But they were in it. They signed in in the beginning, because they have to sign out of it.
They hadn't done it, okay.
So I don't know what you guys, if you guys have been formally voting to approve those, or?
Uh, we're just putting them on and then sending them up to.
Okay. Um. Last thing is the letter for the, uh, landowners that are concerned about the.
Put the food on that first, we could.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Uh, we have a motion to accept the opt-out form for the buyout.
So move.
That, any discussion? All of them in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, I was sorry about that.
Nope, you're good. Uh, last is, the, last thing I have is the letter that we drafted for the, as a response to the landowners that are concerned about the property tax assessments and that whole process.
I like that letter.
Kind of walks through what, what the code provides for and, and points out that, unfortunately, the board supervisors intentionally has zero power to affect any of that process. So, um, that's, that's what I've got. I, I heard a little bit from Nada yesterday that she was planning on me being meeting with Mr. McDowell specifically.
Yeah, I got her too. He has some other concerns that she's addressing.
Yeah, okay, but, so this will, this will be your guys' formal response for that matter. Um, I think I've heard from everybody. Richard was a little uneasy about all of you guys signing it, because he feels that, uh, the property owners should have gone through the actual assessment, appeal process, and, you know, actually followed through their, their duties before even getting a response, which I understand that, that.
And you know what? You probably still will.
Yeah, and, and I hope they do. I mean, that's why, that's why these procedures are in place is, is if you legitimately have an issue with your assessment, go through that process, and, I mean, if you're, if you are being unfairly taxed or unfairly assessed, it will come out. But unfortunately, the board has zero power. I have zero power to do anything about it. Um, so, I just sense.
It's a great letter.
Carol was the only one here today in person. I just changed it to, uh, the signature block saying Mills County Board of Supervisors. Um, so I don't know, Lonnie, you just want her to sign it, or you, you want everybody to sign it still? Like, that's a quick change we can make.
I really don't care. Yeah, it, it's, it's response from all of us. As long as it's data from all of us, I'm fine with it signing it.
So if you wanna sign that, we can scan it and then I, have you just gotten emails? Is that where you're getting the?
Blowing up emails.
So I would say.
And of course, now it's the whole neighborhood.
I would say let, um, have you sign it, scan it, and then you can send it as a response to the emails, but also probably.
Have you heard it sent out, or?
I mean, I don't have the email.
Unless you're able to, unless you're able to identify each of the owners and mail it, that would probably be the best, but.
Yeah, I can't. I mean, I don't get the emails, so I don't know.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
So, all right, so. You wanna give them a copy?
Take a motion on that.
Yeah.
Is that the action item? Can we do a motion on that?
I so move. Made a motion.
I will second that. Any discussion? All of them in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so.
So just have, give this back.
Do you want to, do you want Lonnie find them, or since it's approved, have Carol sign them?
If you've got her on there, I guess it's fine for her to sign. I mean, you know, as acting chair.
So you're, okay.
Are you, are you, so you're gonna have her sign, um, the acting agreement, or?
So, this is the amendment for the abstract. That is for the demo contract.
I was gonna say, I have Lonnie.
Yeah, I'll have to.
We're gonna have him sign it.
Well, or she can just line through. That's fine.
Okay, when you get a copy back from.
Yeah, I'll get you everything. And then here's for the demo. That'll just get everything done, and then, um, have we heard anything for? The, uh, did we put the asbestos abatement bid? Is that next week?
Apparently, we're gonna do it next week, 'cause that was the one thing I missed out.
No, that's fine.
It's on there apparently, so.
That works for me.
So then with that, Cory still can't start Monday?
No, he can.
He can't, even.
The first, well, four of the first six do not have asbestos, so.
Good.
He's tracking the one that does, and, and he'll get started on the four or five that he's able to. And then, um, yeah, once we get the abatement contractor, the one property in the first group will be the first one there sent out to, so.
Okay, Carol, now, you have all those emails, and I don't know how she, she doesn't have a folder here to scan into to email. If we scan it.
Yeah, you can forward it to her, yeah.
And then she can forward it to her.
I mean, if, if that's how you guys wanna respond, otherwise, we can just figure out who the landowners are and mail it to them too. It doesn't matter.
Might as well mail, otherwise.
That's more.
I have no idea.
That's more formal.
We just need to get the addresses.
Yeah, so if you can just make a list of who, who all you've gotten emails from, and Lonnie, if you've gotten emails about the property tax stuff too, um, just get Carol a, a list of those people.
Okay, will do.
All right, I think that's it for me. Any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Tyler. Nice letter. Thank you for helping us.
Hey, I got a question for Lonnie while you're on here too. Were you planning on attending in any way the, um, uh, superboard meeting tonight? There's been some question as to whether to sample it or not, just because cities ask for call-in number, um. I, I, it's up to you guys. I had to respond yesterday with, uh, items on there, because I, um, they were, they hadn't heard back from Carol yet, so.
Who was supposed to have contacted me?
You were supposed to let them know that where it was at, when. Um, usually, the school, um, the school board is the one that usually does the, uh, agenda. They do it. So I just whipped out a couple of items, but if, if, I mean, I don't think Richard will probably be on it, so it's.
I'm planning on being there.
I've got one more day. I don't, the end of today is my quarantine, so tomorrow I can make it, but, uh, tonight I know I can't, so I just.
So they're, and they're also asking for a call-in number, so I don't know that a lot of them are planning on making it either, so.
Well.
I don't think there's anything earth-shattering that we have to meet. Maybe you'll probably postpone them for a month or two weeks or whatever.
I would say probably, yeah. That would make more sense, I think.
Yeah, unless there's something earth-shattering that we have to meet, I don't, you know, we should.
Should we aim for the nineteenth?
I don't really care.
Okay.
As long as it's after tonight, I'm good.
You want me to call them?
Uh, I can send an email. I just got one from, uh, City Hall. Um, I can send one to them to see if. What date?
'Cause, yeah, 'cause I don't ever get anything. The nineteenth? 'Cause I don't get anything from Angie. I don't know whether she's, does it have by?
Are we good to go?
Yep, you're good.
Ready or not.
Yep, ready when you are. Um, so we gather information for a press release on Monday, end of day, and then we issue that press release on Tuesday morning, which I'm sure you saw the most recent one that came out.
Right.
I thought I would give you some updates of just what has happened since our press release. We've had thirty-five additional cases. Our total for Mills County right now is at five hundred and twenty-two, and our positivity rate is at seventeen point three.
That's not good.
That's not good. So we have been talking about this fifteen percent threshold that we needed to keep under in order for our school districts to remain unaffected. That's one of the parameters that the state takes under consideration. The other is when the absenteeism rate is over ten percent. And, uh, yesterday, we were informed by the Glenwood Community School District that they were over that ten percent threshold. So we had a conference call with, um, my staff, um, Glenwood School Administration, and the Iowa Department of Public Health regarding next course of action, and the, the high school is, is the building that's that's under review because of the positive cases and the absenteeism rate, and so, um, we're working with the school board, and they're gonna meet, they're gonna consider some additional actions and some changes, and so I'm sure you'll be hearing about that, and I would just say that they are being very proactive, and they are following all the recommendations from public health, and so we hope that they can chart a, a course to have a two-week period to, um, better manage the conditions that we're in right now. As far as long.
It's scary.
It is, it is, and so, um, they've got some mitigation efforts that they're gonna run through their board and, and hopefully will have some good outcomes. As far as long-term care and GRC updates, I feel like our long-term care facilities, um, have been in an outbreak status, but they've got that under good control right now, and they're seeing a downward shift in positive cases with clients and staff, so that's good.
So can they even get out of their rooms, Julie, or are they just stuck in their rooms?
Uh, they, they are still on phase one, I think, but they, the staff is working very hard, and I think that they're gonna be able to kind of get out. Open up a little bit, but we'll see how that goes. It's a, it's a fairly fluid situation. I feel like we take two steps forward, two steps back. They're doing the best that they can. I would just share information, and this is regarding the GRC, and this is information that the Iowa Department of Public Health has shared publicly, so I don't have any problem sharing it with you, because when the GRC has positive cases, they count for Mills County. They're considered community spread. They're not a long-term care facility technically.
It's a community.
So if staff test positive and they live in our county, we track them. Otherwise, they're tracked in the county they reside in. Any clients that are positive also are tracked as Mills County residents. Our updated numbers from the GRC is they have a total of a hundred and two staff positive cases to date, and a total of seventy-two patient positive cases to date, and so, um, that's what's going on with the GRC, and they are seeing an uptick in cases and, and following directions that they're getting from the Department of Human Services regarding containment of the disease.
Okay.
Um.
We have a couple of excerpts of, or is that the only copy we have?
Which? We have this one.
We need, yeah.
Is this the one you want, or do you want this one?
Uh, either, or.
Uh, you can have both.
Okay, thank you. Very much.
You got, you've got that.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I did have just a couple of questions that are not COVID, and I just wanna run them past Carol, because I am having a board of health meeting on Monday, and I just want to make sure that I am reporting to my board accurately. We had, um, three grants that rolled forward from last fiscal year into this fiscal year. They were given a revenue line item and an expense line item. The revenue is not gonna show up on our reports, correct?
Because they were the last year money?
Yes.
Right, that is.
But, but we're credited to overspend ten grand in each one of those.
Yeah, because of the last year, yeah.
Good. And then we had new sources of revenue from the Burn Jag, which is a federal grant, and Iowa West Foundation, which is a private grant. They don't have revenue or expense line items, and that might be because, I'm not sure we've had those funds roll in yet this year, but you're aware of those and we're good.
All right, we don't have a line, any line items for either one?
No, but it was.
And what is, what was that one for?
Burn Jag is a federal grant for mentoring. Those dollars come through the Iowa Department of Public Health, but it's federal funds. And then we got twenty-two thousand dollars from Iowa West Foundation. That's a private grant for, and that's to support parents as teachers.
Okay, but were those ones you were expecting at all? I, I mean, did you, you didn't budget for either one of them this year?
Uh, they, we, we don't have line items. We secured those dollars after the new grant year, after the new fiscal year.
Okay.
I was just making note of that.
Okay, I, I just wasn't, I was trying to.
Yep. Um, uh, good news, we're interviewing, interviewing a nurse today, so send us some good luck, some.
Is this the one from school?
No.
Oh, no.
No, 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 no. We get our school nurses no matter what. This is a nurse who resides in, in Glenwood, who's interested in that part-time position that we were hoping to, to hire someone by October first, but we have an interview today, so that would be an additional nurse. Would come in nice. Um, one thing that you might see in our budget, and I just thought I would, uh, give you a heads up on it. We have a Office of Adolescent Health Grant that expires in December. We're not able to meet those service deliveries, because we can't get into the schools right now. They have authorized other expenditures for us, um, and I have met with Patrick. They have authorized us to buy a large TV, and then they'll have digital signing, so when you come into our office, we will be able to promote adolescent health, the different programs that we do, who our staff is, all of our upcoming.
Very cool.
Dates. It will be very, very cool.
Yes.
It's rather expensive, but it is coming out of the Office of Adolescent Health, and that's, they're letting us divert funds into purchase for sustainability for the messaging they want out in the community, along with other messaging.
Wonderful, Julie, so Patrick is.
So when you see that big expenditure, just know that it's a hundred percent grant-funded diverted dollars.
Okay.
Okay. Larry, anything else?
No, um, other than, uh, we have, the school districts are, the state is still providing, uh, cloth masks with school districts, thirty-day supply, and day for yesterday for Glenwood, they came up in their thirty-day window, so, uh, the state reported they had some, uh, you know, youth masks, you know, pediatric masks, they did come in, so I ordered, uh, the school request, I ordered six thousand of pediatric and six thousand adult masks, Glenwood. East Mills, uh, they've got two thousand adult masks, they got the last shipment, and then, uh, they requested to see how many of the pediatric I could get, so I ordered them, I believe, I mean, seven hundred and fifty pediatric, 'cause he asked for at least five fifty, and, uh, I ordered him another, I think, thousand adult masks. And, uh, I'm expecting shipment of those either later this week from the state. They're trying to push me off to go real fast. How long this is gonna be available, I don't know, and, uh, so that's, that's going on right now from the state. Some other counties, especially with their long-term care, are requesting still resources from the state in form of PPE, and this includes masks, gowns, testing supplies, stuff like that, and I, I'm not sure if the state is coming forward with that, uh, 'cause I can't see the county activity, you know, for other counties unless they share it, but I'm assuming the state is helping to some degree, but they're, they're trying to wean us off on our own, you know? And, uh, but I think in certain case-by-case situations, uh, they're trying to help, it sounds like, so, so we're watching that real close. Um, the, uh, recently, the Health Corps Coalition that, uh, Mills County is fiscal agent and program manager of, uh, requested to buy some resources, police for support of point-of-spensing operations that are upcoming some, some date, future date, and, uh, part of that shipment, uh, received, uh, in, and I transferred it to public health, through, uh, program manager up there, and the other part will probably be, yet this week, will be shipped to them for distribution to the other twelve counties, so, and this includes Mills County. So that's forthcoming, and, and Julie is still working on point-of-spensing planning, and, uh, kept me up to speed with that. And so when and if we do get vaccines, whatever quantity, and, and the protocols and that are going to be, and procedures associated with that, uh, um, you know, that'll be shared, once it's known, more is known. I think there's nothing concrete yet. There's a lot of planning at the federal, state level going on, just as there is local. But I think till this stuff gets released, and then they figure out the allocations via formula, and then basically finalize the method and the, uh, priority of distribution, then we'll know more. You know, some of that.
You just wanna stay on top of it.
Yeah, she, they're, she's getting, you're getting really good information from the state, so, uh, we just need to be ahead of it, and, uh, and so that we can, you know, kind of massage the planning here locally, and ensure we have all our stakeholders here to support it, 'cause it's just on public health. It's, it's service providers in the area. If that's the route that she elects to go, it's the, if we do, do a point-of-spensing site in the county or more, uh, then it has to be staff. You have, and it's just not public health providers. It's other volunteers, it's needed, that can work in other roles, information, check-in. Uh, it could be, uh, public works, traffic control, uh, law enforcement. Uh, there's a lot that goes with this. Provide, you know, orderly fashion, people parking, walking in, people that are having trouble communicating. In other words, having somebody that is bilingual, 'cause we've had issues with that in the past. So I think we do have a demographic in the county still of some, uh, parents, the families that, I don't know, they're kind of broken English, we might say.
Right.
So we have to have the ability to handle that, ability to communicate with them, especially when we're, they're going through the steps of the process up until administering the vaccine. There's, there is a process to that, uh, as far as, as far as the check-in and education, you know, verification, and then up until the time administration, so, uh, uh, that's, that's all being formulated, and, uh, I think if, I don't think we're gonna get a, a large amount of vaccine to start with, but I'm, hopefully, it will, it will, it will come forward. It will be a continued supply once it starts, and, and since there's a second booster required, uh, that's gonna be the hard part.
And come back.
Is getting.
Why would they do that?
Developing the methods, yeah, developing the methods of recontact, remind people, hey, don't forget to get the future shot during this window, et cetera, et cetera, and getting that administered, so I think that's, that's gonna be a significant effort here, the public health part and all its partners to do that.
So I've been approached, can they come and get both the flu and the. So I've been approached, can they come and get both the flu and the COVID at the same time?
They could, but that would not be a wise thing to do right now because the flu shot is available and we're in the window when you should get it. When that COVID vaccine becomes available, could be late winter, could be early spring. By then you're outside of the window for flu, so if you're thinking flu, get it now.
Yeah. Is, and it, and I think.
I just tell them, it's not, I mean, get the flu now.
Flu's available now.
Yeah. And I think, and I think it would compound the issue with the actual point-of-dispensing operation.
Yeah.
You know.
They're not going to time up together though.
No, I think it would, it's, it's, I don't think it's advocated you do that. And it's probably not a good idea, and as Julie said, we're in the window for the flu, normally around middle of October is optimum to start this process. Some people get it earlier, sometimes in September, you know? But a lot of people tend to get it in October so they can extend their, their, whatever level immunity that they acquire from the latest version out to the spring as late as they can. During the peak of the season, you might say.
We have really great community support. We did reach out to AgriVision and Deshaun about using ShopCo as a point of dispensary because that's a large building. You could socially distance, you could come in one door, you could exit the other. They're completely supportive. And all they would require is a letter of liability insurance, which Carol has gotten from me before. So we've got some plans in play and hopefully goes smooth.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
Yeah, and the other thing is, is that, um, um, the, as an update on how we're operating with our plan you all put in place here, not too long, you know, several months ago. I think all in all, the public is, from what I've told them, has been fairly supportive or, or complying with our mask mandate coming into the courthouse. And, uh, and the county employees that I've observed, if they're coming out behind that screen, they're wearing a mask. And it, it's sometimes hard to remember that, I know. And, uh, but I think we have to, we have to sustain as long as we can and don't let our guard down. And I think even these meetings, we have a lot of public start to come into your board meetings. Uh, we need to have masks here and we need to offer them because, uh, you know.
Here's some, yeah.
We've had a close call, you know, we've had some close calls and stuff, and we don't want, we want to minimize that, we, we can't. And so I, I think, uh, uh, we've just got to figure it out, find out the best to do it and, uh, and whatever. But I think all in all, I haven't gotten much data from the public here on, on, in the courthouse environment. You know, I know about the other county departments, but I haven't heard anything. So, uh, so all in all, I think people are trying to adapt the best they can. But when they see these reports, uh, now in the school district, you know, this district, school district and, uh, the long-term care facility with the increase, uh, a little bit of a surge going on, uh, it is concerning. And, uh, it is going to cause the disreached education in the county to refocus, okay, where are we going? Are we staying brick and mortar or we're having to split it? Where is the defining moment when, uh, we have to go another path, which, you know, the, the, the optimum is the brick and mortar. But again, the students have to cooperate, families have to cooperate, and I, and I think all in all, most of them are. And so.
Well, when my kids went to state, that's what scared me.
Yeah. They're going to change up some practice, so hopefully we'll see some good results here in the next couple of weeks. Lonnie, do you have any questions for me?
Nope, I think we're good. I can have a few tomorrow, so looking forward to it.
All right, you take care, thank you.
Thanks, Julie.
Thank you for not, um.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Yeah, Lonnie. There's a flood recovery virtual board meeting today in the morning. And at, uh, I think it's at one o'clock. And, uh, of course Terry Brown will be sitting in on that. I looked at the agenda and, uh.
Yesterday, look, oh, shoot, did I miss it? I'm sure it's not today.
I, I sat on it. I sat on it yesterday.
Okay, good thing Cory did. I sent it to Cory because I got my days mixed up because, uh, I was concerned about, you know, what, what he had on for us. Because, you know, Terry had mentioned to us that, uh, are you still wanting to encumber, uh, your funds? And all of them or whatever, and I need, give me more, I need more information, you know, something of substance. What I read, he had put in there, he kind of addressed your projects, the board's projects, and what we've already used to date. And, uh, some of that has been more useless and some of it's been the roads project. And then, uh, then some of the things you have in the works. And it looked like that he had encumbered most all, he had encumbered all of that that we've been allocated. So that is good, because the flood recovery board, as you know, they were looking at any over, or monies that weren't going to be used, which is kind of a funny statement to be made, they were going to put back into the pot. And I think there was over twenty million in that pot possibly, I don't know.
They, they said on the main, there is about eight hundred and forty thousand.
So the twenty million.
Been, uh, that became available because of underuse or, or, uh, projects didn't.
So that twenty-one.
Well, we can use that.
And they obligated it to other projects already.
Yeah, they grabbed it.
Um, had already put in applications, um, it was, uh, levees districts that got the money.
I think, I think there were some projects.
Seriously?
No, no, there were some projects on the first round. You know, we got our money and PJ Hamburg, Grand County got money and some of the levy districts got money, uh, that they had to deny because they didn't have enough money appropriated. And I think what they did is they picked some of those projects up that were, they could qualify as being eligible. So I think that's possibly what they did, but that twenty-one million they mentioned, that might have been the amount that had been appropriated, you know, through, uh, legislate action. So the, when I saw twenty-one million, I told Cory, there was twenty-one million, now where are they getting this from? Because I thought that was the max they had.
Something that kind of stuck out to me was they still are open to applications. Um, you could still apply, but, but with the money, something at eight hundred thousand now left available. They talked about the council also like a five million dollar project. They said, well, we're not going to put any money because what's eight hundred thousand going to do for a five million dollar project?
A little smaller.
So.
Sure, there's something we could put some of that in.
Well, the question is, is whether.
There are some projects that Mills County had already in, but they were drainage district mainly, is what I saw. They, they put a spreadsheet up of, of, uh, projects that had applications already sent in, and, and that's what the majority was.
So this was one o'clock yesterday?
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't.
And it was, it was basically something that they had announced, short fuse, and I thought it was today. It was on my calendar for the day because I kind of wanted to try and listen to it and do other work. Because they leave a couple hour window for those meetings. So I'm glad I, uh, I alerted Cory so he could listen in. Um, the, uh, I think it's worth watching because it depends on what the governor goes back to the legislative body and whether she asks to, because see by Iowa law, they appropriate money to be under the oversight of that flood board every year anyway. But normally it's for mitigation-related projects that we normally can't qualify for because we're not a big jurisdiction. A lot of that money ends up going to the top twenty populated areas with heaviest demographic. And, uh, it's just the way the law is written. Uh, we tried to grab some of that for the M and P years, years ago, and we couldn't, from a tax standpoint, we didn't have the match. We, we couldn't qualify. So I attempted to do that, uh, but again, we didn't know we could do it for a levy and they were going to try and do something to help us, because the way the law is written. So this money was separately legislated because of the flood. And, uh, the governor kind of pushed that. And the, I think Dave Zeke is one of the, uh, there's a senator and a representative that sits as a liaison. They don't have a vote. Dave Zeke is the, Representative Zeke is the rep, house, the house rep sits on that. And, uh, and he can, they can both comment support and they take it back to their governing county committees. And that's how that money got put in the pot first time. So I'm hopeful that even though the flood has been ongoing here and we're in recovery and, and reconstitution process here. I think that, uh, maybe when the session comes into being, that maybe it might be reentertained to putting some more money in there for things still on the till.
Because what I hear from the drainage district, their, their pumps are, are crashed. That, that would be a great thing for them to get some money for new pumps?
Well, FEMA kind of denied, and I'll use the example, uh, FEMA, like with the plenty creek drainage, the pumps that had the problems with the, uh, the electrical piece. And then because it got overwhelmed, submerged, and then the pumps themselves, one half worked, one half didn't. And then, uh, the city, City Junction's pumps. Uh, it's the way they were presented to mitigate them and they got denied. And now the latest I know is, I know the mayor was back engaging FEMA again to see if they could, uh, work with them to re-qualify. But I think that's pretty bad. That, the pump thing is a mitigation measure. It makes no sense to me.
Yeah.
So I think those are ageists, I agree. And I think maybe having some projects, even for us in the county here, uh, having some projects in, in a drafting stage. Uh, and it may not be a bad idea, as, as the engineer mentioned, is that if we have some things, especially with our road infrastructure, that, uh, we can tie to mitigation, i.e. the flood or whatever, which we have a lot down in the bottom area.
Right.
That we may want to conceptually draft something up and maybe submit it. And then, then we can monitor it. And then if they appropriate money, then, uh, we can get it on the agenda and maybe, uh, either virtually or go up and represent the project. So.
That's a great idea.
I appreciate it because being a busy day.
Yeah, I, I was kind of like you, I just kind of had it on while I was doing other stuff. So I found it, I mean, few words, going back, looking at the minutes.
Okay.
I would like to know when they have those due, I really wish I would have been notified about.
Yeah.
Well, I.
I thought you sent an email out very soon.
Yeah, in the future, I'll make sure that I capture it.
You would love that.
I thought I captured you all, but I'll, in the future.
I'm glad you all were on it.
Well, it was an afterthought with Cory, because I know he had talked to you about maybe trying to get some money from them.
I mean, it may be worth it to put in an application just to have the application on file for them. And if they do get appropriated, more money.
Maybe we'll come up with some ideas, so, but, uh, I'll make sure, I'm pretty sure, I thought I'd sent that out, but in the future, I'll make sure when I get those. That, uh, they don't meet on a regular basis, uh, necessarily. Uh, they normally have, I think, a regular schedule, but sometimes they just don't meet. It just depends on what's there on the agenda to discuss. And so, uh, but I will make sure I get that out because, uh, especially now we're doing virtually.
Right.
So, all right, thank you.
All right, thanks, Larry.
Good, Cory, you're up.
All right, uh, do you have one utility permit report for telecom construction? T E L C O M, telecom. And it is just a single house service off of Hillman Road at address five eight six four five Hillman Road. Uh, fiber service, uh, little board underneath Hillman. So I have a couple more next week.
Okay.
Receive a few in the last day or so. Uh, first action item is review and approve. Um, the annual county weed commissioner report. Um. Annually, we, we have to, the weed commissioner, myself fills out, uh, report, send in to, um, Iowa Department of Ag. Uh, we, uh, we didn't have as many calls, notifications as last year's for noxious weeds. I don't know if that's attributed to us doing a better job, about getting them last year, or if people just didn't comment or, or, or.
Whatever the case.
What the case is, but, um.
Are you the weed commissioner?
He is, the weed commissioner, mhm, he is.
So you've got to take the, the big test and the whole bit every year?
No, I, I am not a certified, uh, pesticide applicator. Um, we do have four.
He's just a commissioner that tells them what to do.
Yeah, um, we do have four.
Well, I am, so I could, I could go up there.
Individuals that are licensed.
Okay.
Or applications. I guess a quick rundown, we, we do have some noxious weeds in the county that we are aware of. Bull thistle, other thistle, nettle, curly dock, wild mustard, um, Palmer amarette. None of which should be surprised, I think, um, pretty common. Um, no, uh, written or, uh, public notices for, for noxious weeds.
So what's the protocol? Somebody calls into you and says, this, this pasture is full of thistles. Then you go out and.
Contact the landowner.
You contact the landowner.
And, and really, that's, the majority of the time, that's how, as far as it goes, because the landowner says, yeah, I'm aware, or, or, oh, okay, I'll get on it. And, and they take care of it.
And if they don't?
They don't, that's when we have to start, uh, going back to legal, um, authority that Iowa code gives us. Um, which would be, we'd have to put a public notice out first and then we, we'd have to, uh.
Public notice to if somebody.
As far as there's a noxious weed outbreak, I don't know what the correct term is.
Okay.
Uh, it's there and, um, basically stating that we will take the authority to go spray it or get rid of them if need be.
And the county sprays it.
Mhm.
Okay.
So I haven't had to deal with that yet. Um, like I said, I've only, I've only had a few calls in my eighteen months. And, and landowners are usually very responsive and get on it right away. Um, there, there were two other incidences last year, um, where someone noticed Palmer amarette up on Bunge Road. But it was mainly in the right of way, so we, we handled that without having to do any kind of notice or, or contacting, uh, landowners. Um, and.
Usually, once the landowner is contacted, they take it upon themselves to get it taken care of. But if they chose to ignore it, then you got to put a public notice out to get other people to agree.
Uh, just.
It's a nuisance.
Yeah, public, public knowledge or the nuisance.
And then we go out and spray, to then we charge on their taxes?
Uh, I'm not real familiar with how we recoup costs. Um. Another thing, I have to get a little more in-depth when it does happen, if it happens, hopefully doesn't.
Yeah, okay. I just kind of wanted to know what the, how we did that. Okay.
Well, if you guys want to know anything more, we do have to put in how much money we spend on herbicides. In the past year, we put in what chemicals we use on the report. If you're interested, I can go over more of it, otherwise looking for approval and signature.
Okay.
You make a motion, Carol?
I make a motion, Lonnie.
All right, I will second that, is there any discussion? Hold us a favor.
Hi.
I imagine you can sign for Lonnie.
I'll put acting. Share.
I also need you to sign this one. It's stating that I am the weed commissioner for 2021. And it kind of brings me to something I want to discuss in general discussion, maybe we can just talk about it a little bit right now. Um, there, there is a grant program through the Iowa DOT. Um, the Integrated Roadside Vegetation Management Program, IRVM, that has, uh, that has, uh, multiple grants available for roadside management. Um, to be eligible to apply for these grants, we have to have an IRVM plan on file with the state, which we currently do not.
IRVM, okay.
This is integrated roadside man, vegetated management.
Sorry.
Integrated.
Roadside.
Roadside.
Vegetated. Vegetation.
Vegetation.
Management.
Management. Okay.
Um.
Interesting.
But those grants, uh, are available for purchasing seed, uh, native seed, grass seed, purchasing equipment for applying seed. Um, recently, I worked with Pot County to, um, borrow their hydrocedar to, to seed, uh, an area that our, uh, bridge crew had disturbed and did some, some, uh, dirt work. And talking with John, their county engineer and their roadside manager, they were able to purchase their eighty thousand dollar hydro seeding machine, um, at eighty percent cost share from the state using that grant. This is something that I'm now looking at doing right away, still, still got quite a bit on my plate. New shop closing out for construction projects. But it is something I want to do in the future. The first thing obviously being the, being the plan, um, on file with the state. So we are eligible for these grants, but something that I think is worth considering, and I don't have. So we are eligible for these grants, but something that I think is worth considering, and I don't have any kind of figures or money amount for it. But have, I would probably be designated the roadside manager initially. But I think it might be wise and top savings to have a new position, or fill one of our open positions. And designate that person as the roadside manager, and if we did purchase, say, a hydro seeding machine, or, um, some other seeding equipment. They would be designated as their, our roadside manager, which would be great, because we could have him do all of our seeding then, for, um, our small projects that we, we seed anyways. He could be mowing, um, also, uh, which is something that we usually get behind, we have, we have our mechanics out mowing a lot of the times when they aren't working on.
Does Jared have one of those seeders?
You know, I'm not sure, I didn't ask.
Yes, he does, I thought so, I thought so, yeah.
I should have talked to Jared.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, because he does the seeding for the other, and I think he helps out with you, yeah, I think, right Lonnie?
You know, that would be worth looking into Cory.
I wonder if, I wonder if that's a, something that we could share with, uh, conservation management, or. But also that position, I would also prefer to have someone as a roadside manager, as a weed commissioner, and.
No, you don't get rid of the weed commissioner, nah, nah, that's yours, that's yours.
It would, uh, free me up for some of my time, um, be nice to have someone, a little more full time on that.
Maybe that's something you and Jared could, absolutely.
So, just, I haven't really looked into it that much.
I was gonna say, or, in another sense, it kinda makes sense for Jared's department to do that.
Exactly Carol.
You know, maybe, you know, because he already is doing some of that.
Exactly right.
Yeah, but maybe the grant could flow through, or what have you, yeah.
So that's.
Makes sense.
When things slow down a little bit more, I, I, I plan to, plan to get to, to that, but just.
You should not be exempt from flowing there.
Just, uh, just looking at, uh, something that I'd like to, uh, look at in the future. Um, next item I have is authorizing the board chair to sign the contractor's performance bond for project TAP RC oh sixty-five parent one oh nine. The trace bridge replacement in, over Silver Creek in Silver City. Um, last step before we can sign the contract. Um, contractor Jipson Construction submitted their performance bond with merchants bonding company, Des Moines. I wasn't sure if I had to do the, do this through a, uh, action item to the board or not, but.
Yeah, it's action, it's good, yeah.
I make a motion to authorize, okay?
I will second that, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, Captain.
Okay, all the sticky.
Okay.
The title, acting board chair. Next item, approved first and final pay voucher to Vogal Traffic Services for the twenty twenty payment traffic markings. Um, for the amount sixty-eight thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars. Um, this was a local project, guys awarded, uh, May, they completed, oh, about two weeks ago. And looking for approval to make the final payment.
So then they will be finished, done for the year?
They've been, yes, they are done, we did have that little hiccup, uh, at the southwest edge of Glenwood, where they came into town. Not sure why they did that, it specifically states in the plans where to start on the bridge, uh, crossing highway thirty-four and works out, so. Um, we did, we were not charged for that extra paint, so.
Okay, I make a motion to pay the Vogal Traffic Service for sixty-eight thousand nine fifteen to complete their project.
I will second that, is there any discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor?
Aye.
We don't have a signature block, if you want to just sign it following page. Probably table the next item, um, awarded for cash rent of our bar reserve area structure M one, um. We would not have a quorum, as, as I assume Carol's abstaining from a vote, so.
We don't have, yeah, we don't have a quorum.
So we'll, we'll wait, we'll table that till next week, or, or until we have a quorum. Uh, for general discussion, I, uh, I am, uh, we're, we're looking at our final needs and purchases. Um, for, for moving into a new facility, which we're hoping to be, uh, moving in in December. Uh, as, as long as the contractor can stick to the schedule they provided me about two weeks ago. Um, couple things that we will need to still purchase, our, uh, new workstations for, uh, our road foreman and our shop foreman. Just kinda upgrade them to twenty-first century, um, the, the laptop the shop foreman's been using is gotta be at least ten years old, and I can't believe it gets turned on, yeah. So, so that's definitely needed, um, the road foreman does not have a workstation, so currently, so kinda bring him into the modern era. Um, we will also have to purchase a stove to go into our lab, um.
Do you have one down in the other?
We do, clearly, it is a gas stove, and the building's electric, uh, hookup, so.
Okay.
Might have been overlooked there in the design, but, uh, we will have some TVs purchased for the con, well, for our vestal area, um. I don't know, maybe I'm forgetting something. Oh, shelving, shelvings.
Shelving.
For, uh, the parts room, that is, uh, and, and I think we've already talked a little bit about the, um, oil and fluid, uh, system, but, uh, still waiting another bid for that, but.
Got chairs.
Uh, as far as furniture, we're gonna, we're gonna utilize what we currently have, um. Foremen, or actually, uh, technicians have built-in countertops and chairs, so, so we may need to purchase some chairs, but we don't have to purchase that, as far as. Last I looked at it, we shouldn't need to purchase any desks, but maybe some chairs. Um, well, I, I think we'll take over, um, our table in the small conference room for our new conference room, so. Just kind of a heads up, probably will be seeing some, some, uh, uh, equipment and not really too much furniture purchases in the future.
Have you ever looked in your stove, have you looked anywhere?
I have not looked anywhere yet.
Might try down here at Glenwood Equipment, I think, doesn't he have furniture and appliances down there, I think?
He has appliances, yeah.
Yeah, I don't mean furniture, I meant appliance.
What'd you say Lonnie?
You got a little, you got a little bit of everything down there.
Yeah, I didn't mean furniture, I meant appliance, I don't know why I said appliance, yeah, you might check for that.
Supply vent, sure.
Always good to stay local.
Absolutely.
Um, kinda already talked about, uh, the Integrated Roadside Vegetation Management, um. So that's kinda all I had for general discussion, didn't know if you guys had any questions or anything else?
No exciting phone calls.
Oh, we always have some exciting phone calls, uh.
Purchase some property, um, here, we just doing some clothing for buyouts, they, you know, so you can maintain here pretty soon. Isn't that funny?
We can get a couple extra stockpiles around the county. Uh, the, that, that's funny, I mean, we do have stockpile locations, um, around the county that we, we don't utilize, because previous years, um. It was hard to keep people from taking.
Yeah.
That material from the stockpile, so, so we really don't stockpile aggregate in too many places outside of the yard in Glenwood. Um, we, we do stockpile a little bit there south of Malvern, but we used to stockpile some up in Emerson, um, so Kevin told me about an incident, or, uh, uh.
Where somebody that has legs.
Some of that aggregate in a driveway nearby, but.
Just seems like it wants to walk.
Um, I, I guess, uh, heads up, there, there is a signage going up on some of our roads.
Okay.
Uh, for the Lewis and Clark Bicycle Trail.
Oh.
Uh, this is kinda slipped my mind, because the last time, kinda talking about it with, uh, oh, uh, the National Park Services are actually the one kinda running, uh, the lead for it. Uh, last correspondence I had was back in May of last year, and so, so it was kinda in the back, it kinda slipped my mind when I first heard about signs going up, and. But it's a bicycle trail, um, Lewis and Clark Trail that goes from Sioux City all the way down to Hamburg, and I'm guessing they must have started with the signage up north. So that's why they're finally getting to us down, down at the south end of the front, uh, of the trail, but it goes. It comes down the trace, the Wabash Trace, um, from Council Bluff into Mills County, and then at Mineola, it will head south, down, uh, Mineola Blacktop. Um, down to Gaston Avenue, and then come into Glenwood, uh, on Gaston Avenue. And two hundred forty, no, two hundred, what is that, two hundred thirtieth street? And then it will head through Glenwood, um, on, uh, the Lambert, or two hundred twenty-first streets. And then onto Kane Avenue to Pacific Junction, and Pacific Junction down L thirty-one to Bartlett, so. It is a national trail, bicycle trail, and, and signage is going up currently, so.
Would you ride your bike on the two twenty-first street, seriously?
Well, the only time it's on two hundred twenty-first street is from Glenwood to Kane Avenue, so basically.
Yeah.
Pound it from inside town by, over highway thirty-four by Cake Creek Brewery, and then turn right at, uh, Hugh, Hugh's Auction, uh, on the Kane Avenue, so. So, yeah, I.
Not that far, but still.
That would probably be a lot, I feel much better riding there than north of Glenwood on two hundred twenty-first street.
Right, so true.
You definitely have a lot more space, especially where it's divided, um, and, and then you only have, what, about a half mile to get from highway thirty-four to Kane Avenue on, uh, cross traffic, two lanes.
Well, that's quite a, that's quite a jaunt, pretty cool.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's, uh, all I have, and I might stick around for a little bit, um.
On the noise avenue, do you have that?
That is not from my office, but I will stick around for it.
Oh, yeah, is this person coming, um, they, they were supposed to have contacted you, did they?
Richard briefly talked to me about it, um.
Yeah, but did the person call you, because we told them that they needed to, I think they called in and.
I have not.
I don't know why that's.
I've not spoken with them about it, um.
Alrighty.
Alright.
You're next.
Thank you.
Want me to get you?
Uh, no, because I, um, he's got, Jake's there for their stuff. I told Jake nine fifteen, nine.
I did good, didn't I?
I told between nine fifteen and nine thirty, yeah.
What is it? Alright, um, there is one set of documents I'm handing out that I did not email. Um, so Lonnie, it is the overall cost summary, um, for both construction estimates and engineering. And I actually, I'm gonna call Kara real quick on my cell and put her on speaker.
Here's a question.
Yeah. Hey Kara, Jake, um, here in the boardroom, I'm gonna put you on speaker if that works for you, okay? Alright. Can you hear us Kara?
I can.
Alright.
Hi Kara.
Hello.
So I just passed out the, uh, updated cost spreadsheets related to the two agenda items. Um, the one agenda item is adjustment of the master service agreement not to exceed total. The second is a task order for additional design, um, easement coordination, and landowner review meetings, so. Where we stand right now, we're still kind of in the, I think a similar, similar stage where I talked to you last time when we were talking about contracting. Um, we're working on getting bid packages out for, um, a bunch of these remaining projects, um. And like I said, we have, um, a task order for, it is fifty thousand total, thirty-seven thousand five hundred, Mills County. And the MSA increase is from, let's see. Seven hundred ninety-three thousand to nine hundred and seven thousand five hundred, so. First, with that MSA increase, it brings our JEO estimate to one point two zero four five nine two. Um, we do have some additional, two additional task orders upcoming for construction services and construction testing. But that, that essentially rounds out our task orders, um, this would be the final. The final and last adjustment to the MSA, um, we're sitting at about twenty-two point six seven percent of the total budget of five point three one three million. Um, and I guess the, the main reason for the MSA adjustment is essentially the archaeological task orders we have listed, two point five, two point six, two point seven. As well as two point three, we weren't really sure wh- which sites we were gonna have, have to go out and actually dig for that phase one archaeological survey. And so when we did the last MSA adjustment in March, that one was just to actually correct an error on the initial MSA, to bring our, our contract amount to what we projected it to be. Anyways, what we projected it in March, we didn't have a good handle on those archaeological services, now we do. Um, those are essentially all in their final stages of completion, just getting the reports written. Uh, we didn't run into any phase two investigations on any of the sites, which is awesome, so, um, like I said, this is, this is now the final, final numbers for our JEO contract. And then you can see that relates to this document here Carol, um, you can see our totals. Um, you can see our totals listed here towards the bottom as well as the total. With all the construction costs included, so that very bottom number, five point nine seven two. That's, that's where we're currently projecting to be, which of course is about six hundred and some thousands over the total.
I was gonna say, aren't we a little over?
We are.
Right.
Yep. Yep, we are, and so that's where we're looking at which projects may not get done. Um. And that's that's part of Corey's, Corey's Corey's here, you know, the two Mills County projects. Are there at the bottom of the list, pretty, pretty high dollars on one of them, four hundred thirteen thousand one eighty two on the other. But we're also looking at taking out projects that are strictly terraces and tiling. And the reason there, that those just don't rank as high in terms of the project goals of water quality and flood risk reduction. So Site Six, for instance, is just terraces, that is one we're looking at removing. Site twelve is.
You would remove the terraces more than you would remove the ponds?
Yeah, the ponds are gonna provide good benefits for both water quality and flood reduction.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
So Site Six, um Site Twelve, so you got fifty six thousand, fifty three thousand. Um, and then we're looking at twenty seven, removing that one. That's twenty thousand, so we have about a hundred and twenty thousand there. Um, that were. Basically, we've made the decision, those are not going to move forward, uh Kara's in the process of contacting those landowners to let them know.
Could there ever be an extended of some of this money that these farmers could get their terraces put in?
There's a possibility with another program, but with this program and this grant source. Uh, Kara has requested through the state IEDA and. The extra money that was there for a brief time period has been given to other places. I don't know, I think Storm Lake might have been one, Dubuque.
The urban, the urban projects received the additional funding.
Oh, they did?
Yep.
Yep, um my counterpart that is also rural uh did not receive funding as well, so they they sent it specifically to Dubuque. So yes, um, we're basically six hundred and fifty eight thousand four seventy two over according to these figures, um. And by reducing or pulling those projects at this time, um that'll put us about two thousand dollars under. Uh, what the grant amount is.
That's Project Six, Twelve, Twenty Seven, and the two Mills County sites.
Correct, correct, um and like Jake said, um. There is no additional funding through the IWA program. Um, there potentially is other programs and we are actively applying for those. So through the WMA specifically, um we are applying for a couple of different programs, um obviously terraces. Um, NRCS SWCD pays for, just not at this percentage. Um, but yeah, terraces, terraces rank lowest for the. Goals of this specific program.
Okay.
So. Um, and you'll see on here, a couple of them, that the landowner has terraces as well as another project. And by them having multiple projects, they also rank higher. Um, so terraces, there will be terraces going in.
Right.
Um, but it's with landowners that have multiple practices that check more of those scoring boxes. So, and one of the other things is I have also offered um to JEO to go out and help. Um, with any monitoring that we need onsite, um with me being so close to these projects. I can be out there pretty quickly and easily compared to um. You know, possibly JEO having to drive down and things like that, so we're looking at other ways of making sure that we stay under this budget. Because I've, I've voiced it from the beginning that we just, we cannot go over this grant amount.
Yeah, yeah.
And there's, there's a couple other things that we are doing as well to try to. Keep a good handle on these as we bid these next bid packages. Um, at one point in time, we made a decision to lump uh sites together. And we're still going to continue with that with the next bid package, but after that, we are going to split them up. More into individual landowners per bid package. Um, so that way, each time we bid one of those, it's a little more paperwork. Um, but we will know what those bid prices are and be able to continue adjusting this sheet. Because as you can see, the orange ones are the, are the hard costs, those are the contract amounts. So as we bid them out, we will update these and have an updated total. I am hopeful, um we always estimate conservatively, we don't, we don't want to be the low bidder. Um, so I, I'm fairly confident that our estimates are conservative and we will see bid prices come in lower. Um, but I, we're probably not gonna get six hundred thousand dollars worth of.
Little bit.
Of reduction in, in the difference between the bids and our estimates, but. I, I do think some of these bids will come in lower than our estimates.
So Corey, what was the, what was the word that you wanted on that three sixtieth street?
Three hundred sixty street was the Greenwood Structure Replacement, um. It's a structure that doesn't qualify as a bridge. Or it's, it's by definition not a bridge, Iowa code, um so it doesn't qualify for bridge funding. Um, I had to double check, but I don't think three hundred sixty streets have FM route, so it wouldn't qualify for FM funding. So finding a, a funding source for replacing that structure is difficult.
Shoot.
That, that, it's disappointing, but.
Yeah, and how about the four fifteenth?
Four hundred fifteenth was a um broken back culvert, um. Basically, see, great change in type culvert and that was similar, not on an FM route, would have to use local funds to replace it. Really would have been great to get, to get these funded, um I realized. Landowners were always considered first for this, this grant and in the road infrastructure, but. Hopefully we'll stay working with Kara and.
Yes.
Okay.
That's one thing, Corey has been very, very active with working with me, um we are applying for a ten million dollar match grant. Uh, which means we would receive ten million dollars uh with matching ten million dollars. To do projects just like this, and I'm working specifically with the county engineers, um. To do a private public partnerships in some cases where we can do bridges, um. And then upstream from it, do a bank stabilization where typically funding cannot pay for that bank stabilization. So we're working on an additional or other funding sources, basically. Um, that one as well as two or three others, um that we are actively working on trying to uh. Get.
Right.
So, um.
You go girl, you go get that money.
We'll, we'll continue working with, with Corey and with uh with the county uh through the WMA, um. It's just, you know, unfortunately, this program, it looks like we have extended our funds, um and we need to make sure that we stay within that.
Right.
So, uh.
Well, and it, there was a point in time when extra funding was potentially on the table.
Yes.
You know, we purposely uh lined up more projects than the budget.
Wasn't that then these last three ponds came in later?
Um, there were several ponds that came in later, I know that twenty seven, those terraces came in later, and even the roads. We did add, we did add those later, there's, there's four or five ponds that aren't on this list that already got crossed off because of easement issues. Um, those types of things, so, I mean, this total at one point in time was at like six and a half, seven million. And at that time was, we were hopeful, we were gonna be able to pull more funds in and. And so it, I mean, we purposely tried to line up more in, in the event we would get more funding, so.
Yeah, if you remember, we actually had to, two things, we had to first of all prove to IEDA that we were going to spend these funds. So we wanted to make sure that we had projects there that were going to go through um to the end to make sure that we weren't scooped. Because uh the additional funding that IEDA put toward Dubuque and the urban projects actually came from Raccoon River.
Oh.
Yeah, so, so one of my counterparts um did end up getting their funds pulled back. Uh, because they did not have projects lined up, so we were running that risk, um if we didn't have additional projects. But yet we were also wanting to request additional funds and like I said, um. Adam over east, one of my other counterparts, Kia asked for just about the same amount, he and I were talking on Monday. And we were in the same boat, basically that, you know, now we're having to, to make sure that we stay under our budget. But, um, you know, like I said, we, we, this is a good problem to have because now we have a couple shovel ready projects. That we can show on grant applications and funding applications that, hey, we're ready to go, we have the funding need. And we have willing partners uh with these projects.
And one more note, we, I mean, the design is done for both of them. And the permitting, I believe, is also either done or almost completed, so. We went through that effort, um because again, uh a lot of moving pieces, we weren't quite sure what the funding. Was gonna look like, so it was, it was in our queue to get the design done and we did that, um so. When funding does become available or in, in grant applications, that's one positive is that the design is done, like Kara said, it's essentially shovel ready. Um.
And that was all done without county expenses too.
That's true, right, it was all program funded.
Okay.
So, yeah, I know, little disappointment o- obviously, but this, this is where we're at, so.
And Kara, don't give up on me, I still want to come out and, and be with you guys, so.
You're gonna come out today?
You got one today?
We do, we have uh Site fourteen, bank stabilization, there's a Iowa Learning Farms is coming out today.
That's what you were talking about Kara, what time is that?
Well, it's actually from ten to noon, I believe.
Yep.
So, remember, I'm, I'm gonna head over there after this.
And.
Yeah.
Where is this at?
Uh, that's one by Emerson or Henderson, yes.
Go, go to Henderson and head south out of Henderson on the uh to Dobney.
Right.
Make a right on Dobney.
Right.
And it is just past the last house. You'll make a right, you'll see, you can see the construction equipment from the dirt road. So yes, more, I would welcome you guys to come out, um Iowa Learning Farms is doing interviews today. Of the landowner, uh myself, possibly JEO and the contractor, um to do a public outreach uh digitally. So, and you will see a lot of action, I was out there last week, he had dirt moved, he already had rock out there, so. I talked to him last night and he says today is a really good day to come out and look at it, and it's gonna be beautiful.
Right, perfect.
So if you guys want to come out, you're more than welcome to just stop out and, and see what's going on.
Okay. Ten to noon, hopefully I can get out there, I would love to do that.
If you're gonna be a little later than at that, I can stick around and meet you out there too.
I'll give you a call.
Okay.
Okay. Alrighty.
Hey guys, can we vote on a couple of these then?
Yeah.
Yep. Hang on. And I'm so move.
Aye.
Anything you need to sign there?
There is.
Sign it or do you need Lonnie's signature?
I'm not, I'm not sure what if.
Do you guys need me anymore?
Uh, no, I think, I think you're good to go Kara, thanks for joining.
Thanks guys.
Bye.
Bye.
Um, yeah, I don't know, Carol, can you sign it for Lonnie?
For acting unless you want Lonnie to.
No, here is one, so if you just want to sign two copies.
You want Carol to sign it also?
Uh, yes.
Sorry Kara.
Alright, the next item on the agenda is Exhibit B, task order.
That's a second copy, so I'm, I have a.
Okay, so we need to approve the Exhibit B, is that?
Yes, that is the task order.
That's the task, and I make a motion, Lonnie, I move.
I will second, I will second that, is there any discussion? Are you not all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do you need to sign that too?
Yes. Here is one copy. And here's the other.
Who do you want me to sign to?
Uh, right here. Yes.
That kind of scared me. And then print it and then just put, okay.
Yeah, and just date it and that should be good.
Want me to put acting chair?
Sure. Yeah, we, yeah, is that an agenda item? Sort of. Which one of these are? And these are the agreements for one of the landowners. This one is Site, Site twenty six, he is doing a pond. And I don't need copies of these, these can be maintained by you. MAPPA SWIPCO does need copies.
Okay.
But I do, I do not.
Okay, so, alright.
Yep. So if you sign these and then get it to Grant. And Kara, I think, I think she's, she's filing them electronically as well.
Well, I have a MAPPA meeting at once, so I could.
There you go.
We'll need a copy of it, okay Kara?
Okay.
Hey, the next item on the agenda is approval of the CDV DGC sixty seven.
I will too, and Carol, I may see you out there, um we'll see how timing works out, but yeah.
This total is three thousand six hundred and twenty two dollars, three thousand four thirty, University of Iowa, and a hundred and ninety two will go to JEO. Um, since it says chair, um Lonnie, I think you could probably sign this later if you wish.
Where are you at?
Next thing on the agenda.
I so move.
You've got a motion, I will second that, is there any discussion? Are you not all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Alright, so you're gonna take those, uh, do I have to sign? I don't think I have to sign them.
No.
Or do they need to be, is that the West Mishna?
Yeah.
Okay. I think those, those are the ones you're taking to MAPPA to give to Grant.
And this one doesn't look like.
You're supposed to sign on the signature one. It just says name and title and then sign it.
Okay. This one, there's nothing there.
Okay. This one is, I think it's a copy then. With the.
It does need a notary?
Yeah. Okay.
Can you do that for the one that's two?
Um, okay. There you go. Okay. Alright, and you go.
And you don't, you don't let.
What, what do you say?
What'd you say, Lonnie?
Was it Olmstead and Perry or Jill next?
Um, why don't we just do Olmstead and Perry right now and then I'll go grab Jill? How about that?
I'll go grab Jill so I can look at it.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Potty break.
Alright.
It was just, just a notice to proceed for the water line to Pony Creek.
We don't have a resolution right now. I messed up with that. I didn't get it on there. And if they need one, um, we'll have them contact and, but if Lonnie's gonna chat with them and see if we can just go with the notice to proceed. If not, they'll give you a call and we'll approve it later. Is that?
Got it. Will I make a motion to proceed with the water line to Pony Creek?
I will second that. We'll just type them up a letter, Carol.
Okay.
It's dating to this date. We gave them notice to proceed on designing a water line from, oh, I think it's Deacon to Up Deacon from, uh,
If you just.
Hillman. Is that Hillman?
I was gonna say, if you just wanna shoot me an email, what?
I'll do that.
Uh, that would probably be the easiest.
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay.
Then get, I think it's the description. That'll work.
Okay.
I will second that. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Okay. I have resolution twenty thirty-nine. It's the Sutton property from two thousand seventeen. And, uh, the Colgroves came in the other day and paid that. So I am abating, uh, just the penalty on it, not the taxes. They paid the taxes. It was for a mobile home that, uh, was removed back in two thousand seventeen. And it was removed after taxes went out. So they owed the taxes. So I am abating a hundred and fifteen dollar penalty for the years following. And that's with resolution twenty thirty-nine.
Did you say a hundred and fifteen?
Hey.
Hundred and fifteen. Good.
I so move, Lonnie.
I will second that. We've got a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Resolution. So we'll do a roll call.
Zitten?
Yes.
Mayberry?
Yeah.
That does that.
Perfect.
Thank you.
And then, um, I also, uh, got an email yesterday from a lot of county treasurers. I guess we were supposed to make, it, it's not clear yet if it needs to be a resolution or not, that we are not having a county tax sale. Uh, so you have to put it out publicly. I've been putting it out monthly and, but they, another gal said, why don't you just write an inclusive letter that shows that you're suspending your June twenty tax sale for the month of August of two thousand twenty through May of two thousand twenty-one. And you will have it, depending on how things are, we will have it in June of two thousand twenty-one. So, uh, I want you guys to have this on file. But I will continue to see if I need to make it as a resolution or if I could just give it to you, uh, as a, as a letter showing this is why. It's, it's posted out here in, in the lobby. And I suppose if, if it's a resolution, then we could put it in the paper and then people would, would know. But that's, that's the letter they gave me to look, use as my template to make my own. So, yep, that one's mine. And then, uh, Glenwood Municipal Utilities, uh, said they did not get their tax statement and they would like us to, uh, forego the two dollar late fee on the ones that are still due for the two, two drainage districts. That's all they pay taxes on is the drainage districts. I told her that I couldn't do anything without coming to the Board of Supervisors. And we don't take late fees off for anybody else. I've charged the state forum and other cities and municipalities. And, but I told her I would come to the board and see what, what you guys thought.
Now they can pay the two dollars.
Okay.
I move. I second it.
No, it's just.
But I'm just, that was the wrong choice of words, but.
Yes.
I agree with Lonnie.
Okay.
You don't do it to anybody else.
Nope, I don't. So I don't.
And I agree with Lonnie. They can pay the two dollars.
Okay. Sounds good. Sounds wonderful, actually. So I will, I will continue to check on that letter to see if it's something that I need a resolution for. If I do, then I will try to get back next week or, or whenever I get my information and we can either make it into a resolution. But I do want it on file somewhere that, that we are following protocol. And I did talk to Tyler and that was way back when, when we decided not, that we were not going to do it. So, okay? I think that's all I've got today. Yay.
Good job, kiddo.
And I even talked fast, didn't I? So you guys can get out. Okay, thanks a lot.
Thanks too.
See you when I hear back from those, uh, from the other treasurers says of whether we may, need to make it into a resolution.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay. That's great.
And the stop sign thing that was on the agenda, he, um, had requested a time and Jackie had given him a time and it was, I told him to come in nine o'clock during Corey's time. And apparently he chose not to. So that one is.
Sure.
Yeah, he didn't show.
Yeah, he can come back in later. He can send us an email, what he wants. Not a big deal.
Right.
Alright, I'm gonna sign off here and, uh, I'll probably get ahold of you in a little bit, Carol.
Okay.
Stuff I need to record.
Okay.
So, maybe I'll hop outside or something.
Sounds good.